Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
United States.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
The republic. Which stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty.
And justice.
And justice. Thank you.
So, like, if I may make a quick announcement since we have such a great turnout tonight, do you mind?
Please do.
Okay, um, so everybody, so in case you didn't realize, uh, we did have a flag in John Malcolm's Square there, so thanks all for saying the pledge with us. My name is Kristin Powers, I'm the Assistant to the Select Board, and thank you all for coming tonight. Um, just so everybody knows, these meetings are recorded, the, the, just the sound is recorded and they're submitted to Peg TV for their records. Um, that being said, if Mike Beecher is our Chair of the Board and he indicates when it's time for folks to speak, um, so if you have your video on, you can raise a hand. Um, it is helpful, like Jessica said in the beginning, to mute yourself when you're not talking, it does help to prevent feedback since there's so many of us. I think that's all, um, and I'll let Mike take it from there.
Okay, do you have any additions or deletions?
So this is Kristin again. Um, I did send out an updated agenda to the Board yesterday, but we have two additions in the pre-requested appearances, section one from Devon Neary from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, as well as Barbara Noyes-Pulling, hopefully I pronounced that correctly, also from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Um, we had Rich Hewlett, who was asking to be on the agenda as well. Those are the only additions and I have no recorded deletions and that's all from me.
Okay, so I guess we'll go through and I'll, I'll go through my screen and, and announce everybody's name that I can see on my screen. We have a few phone numbers that I'll, I'll let them announce themselves. So, I'm Mike Beecher, uh, I see Kristin Powers, our Assistant, Chuck, one of our Select Board members, Chuck Whedon, Ed Cleveland, a Select Board member, Jessica Van Ork, John Malcolm, one of our Select Board members, John Sabata, Barbara Noyes-Pulling, Dina Simpson, Devon Neary, Sarah Young, Harry Van Meter, Frank Nelson, Dame Ricard Senior. Um, I see a 645-0413, who does that belong to?
Bob.
Okay, Bob, I keep, I still can't remember your number, and 79, 779, is that you Keith?
Yes, Mike, that's me.
Okay, did I get everybody? Appears that way. Okay. Next on the agenda. Approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Everybody had a chance to look over the minutes? Everything seems to be in order? Okay, does anybody want to make a?
I'll make a motion. This is Ed Cleveland, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Ed made a motion, does somebody want to second that motion?
John Malcolm will second it.
Okay, John, thank you. Is there any more discussion? All in favor? Chuck?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Pass, thank you. Pre-requested visitors, if you can bear with me one minute, I just need to adjust my position here. Thank you. So who's up first? Rich was on, right?
Yeah, um, this is Kristin. Bob, do you know if Rich is planning on coming still?
Um, he is gonna ask to be postponed till the next meeting.
I can do that.
Thank you.
So that means that Devon Neary is up.
Hi, everybody. Um, for those of you that don't know me, um, Devon Neary, I am the Transportation Planner at Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Um, and recently I've been working with a group of folks, uh, many of you who are on this call from Pollitt on a pedestrian accessibility program, um, that has kind of been resurrected from a 2014 pedestrian accessibility study uh, that the town participated in with the Regional Planning Commission. Um, and Sarah is really kind of the, um, leader of this group, so I would love to have her kind of weigh in on this. Um, but, so what we have been looking at is enhancing pedestrian accessibility, especially in the village center area, um, most notably at the intersection of 30 and 133. Um, and at, using some of the recommendations from the 2014, uh, walking audit, um, we are looking at ways in which we can move forward with some of those recommendations, which are also laid out in the town plan. Um, in order to do that, uh, we all are in agreement that, um, we will certainly need to apply for some grant funding through Vtrans Bicycle and Pedestrian Grant Program, um, for most likely a scoping study. And the reason we're doing a scoping study is because of the really complex issues that arise in any state right-of-way, um, which we have two intersecting state right-of-ways in the historic district, um, so there's a lot of variables. So in these cases, the state is really recommending that, you know, if there are any kind of permanent safety countermeasures installed, that they really have to be vetted through a scoping study, which is usually done through a consultant or engineer. So the group has met and decided that that is most likely the next course. Um, and in doing so, we also agree that there is really a need to look at the engineering of the roadway. Um, there's not much evidence that this particular section in downtown, the downtown village area, has ever really been, you know, analyzed by a modern engineering standard. Um, so another request that we will have tonight is, um, for the Select Board to make a formal request to Vtrans for an engineering study of that roadway, um, Route 30, 133 intersection, as far as the Barn Restaurant down to, um, the General Store. Um, so, um, I can't exactly remember how many linear feet that is of Route 30, um, but a significant amount. See if, um, they could potentially change the speed limit or, uh, alter any of the transitions or the roadway width in any way. Um, and that's really the first, uh, kind of place to start whenever looking at an, a, a reevaluation of a state roadway. Um, so we feel as though going through the proper kind of procedure is really the most important step um, in moving forward, and this will help eventually support any, you know, grant funding that might come our way after a potential scoping study. And so I would love to hear from Sarah if I missed anything in kind of laying out that, um, process that we've undergone.
Uh, no, thank you Devon, I think you, um, described the, the initiative really well and, um, I want to thank, thank you for, um, for being a part of our group and, and really helping move this initiative, um, forward. I guess, uh, you know, just emphasize, um, that, you know, we're, we're not recreating the wheel here. What we're really doing is looking back at a lot of the work that had been done, um, um, you know, in 2014 and even really, um, before that, and, um, I think it really came out of, um, our, the library's strategic plan and interviewing community groups and, and residents of Pollitt. This intersection, um, came up again and again, which is why our Connectors Group felt like this should be one of the, uh, the top priorities that, one of the initiatives that we helped, uh, see to some sort of completion in Pollitt. Um, so we're, we're excited to be working on this and, and again, want to thank the Regional Planning Commission for their support. So, um, if you have any questions, Devon and I will do our best to answer them.
Yeah, so what we're really looking to come out of this meeting with, I don't know how much, um, the Board has been prepped by Sarah, if at all, Sarah?
Yeah, sure, so there, there are basically two, um, two asks in front of the Select Board tonight. Um, the first is to, is to...
Sorry, the screen just froze here. Um, so what we're looking to get out of, uh, tonight's meeting is a municipal resolution to apply for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Grant, um, which is not a commitment to funding, um, but it is a commitment to apply and have, um, some consensus from the town that this is a supported project. The other, um, thing we're looking for is also a letter, um, of request to Vtrans to perform the engineering study. This, uh, there will be known costs incurred from the town to perform this engineering study, um, and it will be performed at the time in which, you know, Vtrans is able to do it, which is first come, first served. So I'm hoping, you know, certainly within this summer, they'll be able to do, to do it. Um, and in terms of the, um, scoping study, um, we had talked about this reserve funding available to the town, um, and likely we will need that $5,000 to cover the local match for a scoping study, which will be in the range of $25,000. Um, so there is a 10% match there. Today Sarah and I both, uh, actually sat in on the webinar for the Bicycle and Pedestrian, uh, Program Grant, um, just to be able to familiarize ourselves more with that program. In the past few years, the R-RBC has had a lot of pretty good success upon to these grants, so, um, I'm fairly confident that, you know, by having the pre-planning involved in this scoping study, that will be a, a really strong candidate.
Okay, Sarah, would you be the one writing the grant? This is Mike.
Yeah, hi Mike. Um, so it, uh, Devon through the R-RBC, um, will be, um, I think taking the lead on that, but, um, myself as well as Jonas, um, will absolutely be assisting with, with that grant writing process.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike, I would really like to see our kind of transportation advisory group, um, really come to a good consensus on that, um, application and have it reviewed and kind of, uh, signed off by everybody.
Okay, that makes good sense, a united front, of course. And then to ask, Vtrans is, is just a, a letter of asking, requesting for that study?
Yeah, it, it's, it's a pretty, um, standard kind of form letter, which Devon has already, um, has a, a good draft, you know, if, if the Select Board decides to go that way, um, that's a, a letter that we would, you know, um, provide to you, uh, to send to them. It needs to be signed by each member of the Select Board.
Okay.
This is John. Can I speak?
Yes, John, go ahead, please.
Um, I, I think Devon, we want to, it isn't to the General Store, it's to Sheldon's Market to the south.
That's, that's what I meant by General Store.
Number one, as opposed to the former Max General Store, which is now Max Market. Uh, the other thing that we may consider is that to the north, uh, Route 30 is 50 and past the Mac Farm and, which has been, as Bob Morlino discussed last time, has been the, uh, site of three serious accidents. One, there was a fatality with a bicyclist, um, right in their Julie Macs dooryard. And I wonder if we should consider going that far and decrease from 40, recommend that it's decreased to 40 at that farm where there's a lot of activity on a dangerous curve. And then at the Barn Restaurant, drop down even more, um, to enter the more densely populated village.
How do you feel about that Devon?
I am certainly not opposed to it, I think it, I think that absolutely has to be part of this. Um, so what we're really looking to do is almost two separate things here, and to start, we want to be as general as possible. So when Vtrans comes and does their preliminary engineering study, we want it to be all in cup and same kind of 30,000 foot view. Um, and then we can look at the specific items of maybe, uh, speed limit transition zones as well as pedestrians crossings. However, I think that, um, in looking at the whole picture, we should really kind of, uh, focus on that village center crossing as a highlight in our end goal. Um, however, depending on what they produce as an engineering study, we should then ask for more specificity with looking at potential transitions for mile an hour zone changes, um, because I think we all agree that 35 through the village is much too fast, especially around that corner. Um, so my hope is that when they first look at it and do the ball bank curve analysis, which is, uh, an engineering study of that corner, they will automatically maybe default to a 25 mile an hour zone. Um, so that's the best case scenario. Worst case scenario is they say, you know, let's keep it as is. In that case, we should then return to Vtrans and say, we want a very specific study of this one component of that, um, request, whether it be, you know, a transition, as John had mentioned, to a lower speed limit earlier, or whether it is, you know, having a, a pedestrian crossing on a 35 mile an hour zone on a blind state corner. So, you know, I think starting broad and then kind of narrowing our focus over time is, is important. Um, but with this preliminary kind of study, I think, just looking at the big picture and then adding the language saying, you know, we are looking at potentially adding a crossing here, may focus their attention a little bit to, you know, versus just a roadway that is wide open and is travel only. Um, it does change the dynamic.
Okay, thank you Devon.
Does anybody else have in the, on the board have any more questions? Okay, does anybody at this meeting have any questions for Devon or Sarah? Okay, is there anyone on the board, how do you, how do you feel about pushing this, this study forward and applying for this grant? It seems to be a common focus, um, through many of years that I've been on the Select Board, that this problem comes up several times in the course of a year. So I would think that we're, we're in a very good position to get some good resolution about it right now. So I'd like to see if somebody would like to, uh, make a motion that we proceed with this grant application.
Uh, this is Ed, I would make that motion to proceed with that, uh, the grant application.
Okay, excellent, can I hear a second?
Mike, this is Bob, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded by, uh, Ed and Bob to, uh, proceed with the grant application. Is there any more discussion? All right, Chuck, how do you feel? Chuck?
No.
No, okay. Ed?
Uh, yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, so the yeses have it with one no vote. Now, the other thing we need to do is, we need to, uh, write a request to the state for an engineering study. Is there any more questions or comments about that? Would somebody like to make a motion to, uh, proceed with that letter of request for an engineering study to Vtrans?
John will make that motion.
Okay, John, do I hear a second?
Mike, this is Bob, I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded by John and Bob to, uh, ask the state to do an engineering study on this intersection. Is there any more discussion? Okay, Chuck, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Okay, the yeses have it. Thank you very much Devon and Sarah for your hard work on this, or the start of your hard work on this project, so we'll, um, keep us in the loop. And anything else we can do to help out, please reach out to us and we will do what we can do. Does anybody else have any more questions for Devon or Sarah at this point?
Thank you, I just want to say thank you Mike and looking forward to working with the town on this one.
Excellent, this will be a great, a great thing, thank you very much.
Absolutely, have a good night, thank you.
Good night. Okay, and now our next on the list is Barbara, uh, Kristin?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, so Barbara, if you'd like to address the Board.
Thank, thank you.
Meeting, please.
Can everybody hear me? Okay?
Yes, fine, thank you.
Great, um, yeah, Regional Planning Commission night, tonight, at least the start of your meeting tonight.
Excellent.
Yeah, I'm with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission too, I'm, I'm actually here on behalf of Hillary Solomon with the Potlany Metherway Natural Resources Conservation District as well. Um, we wanted to give you a progress report on, um, the, uh, the third phase of the Flower Brook Watershed Flood Resilience, um, projects that have been going on. So first of all, I just want to, um, recap some of the things that have been completed, um, in that scope of projects. Um, the, the community church parking lot improvements have been made, um, and that's, um, to, um, handle some of the runoff from the hillside behind the parking lot and the church. So that should help decrease flooding and improve water quality. Um, Trees for Streams has been going gangbusters of the spring. It's one of the things that Hillary especially has been able to do in, in the COVID, times that we're in right now, and, uh, about five acres, um, have been planted the trees, um, along the tributary to the Beaver Creek. Also, a, a landscape assessment was done to determine sources of phosphorus, yeah, in the watershed, and that data's gonna be used to reach out to landowners who might have some wetlands, um, next to some of those assessed areas, and to reach out to them about the importance of wetlands for absorbing sediment and stormwater and nutrients and the like. And so, um, the, the overall project will also continue to address Pollitt Village vulnerability, um, you know, to flooding by reducing sediment upstream, and there's two other towns involved with this, uh, Tin, uh, Tinmouth and Danby, and so there's work in those towns and changing out culverts, fixing some bridges, um, and fixing some driveway drainages and culverts as well. So that's the upstream stuff that should help Pollitt. What's coming up next, um, the water quality monitoring was canceled this year uh, because of state budget concerns. Um, that was being done in the Flower Brook, and Hillary, um, would like to come to you at a later date and review the data from the last couple of years. Um, and that also includes, um, um, data from, from Danby, and hopefully that monitoring work can resume, um, maybe later this fiscal year. Uh, we'd like to reassemble the Flower Brook Watershed Advisory Group, and I had Kristin send out to you, um, these ideas that we have for reassembling this group and changing, or adding to, um, the mission of the group a little bit. We want to add climate resilience to the flood resilience, um, package. And as, as you can see in the sheet that was sent out, I mean, this would, this would, it's sort of like doing a hazard mitigation plan, um, and, and looking at where the impacts might come from climate change. And the list that I sent you are some ideas, they're not set in stone. But it's, it's starting points, you know, for water resources, agriculture, uh, forest, uh, recreation, uh, infrastructure in the town, things like that. So the idea there is to blend the two, the flood resilience and the climate resilience, look at where some of the issues are that are popping up, and come up with some ideas to maybe start addressing those. So that would be, uh, another next facet of this Flower Brook Watershed. We'll be doing that with the other two towns, and this advisory group would include all three towns. And I think we have some members of the Planning Commission already on that group, or, or not, area, or, you know, it could be the Planning Commission, could be the Energy Committee, could be members of the Select Board, could be members of the public that have an interest. So that's what we're looking at in the next few months. So entertain any questions, I know I threw a lot out at the table right there, but...
Does anybody have any questions for Barbara right now? It seems like, go ahead, please.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Um, it seems like you're making good progress and trying to determine what, any, any issues that we have that, with the Flower Brook that we can resurrect and, and correct, and a, and a good step in that direction, so. It's very important to, uh, keep our waterways clean as possible. So, thank you for that and your ongoing report, and if anybody wants to get on that committee, how's the best for them to, uh, just reach out to you at R-RBC?
Yep, they can do that, or to Hillary, Hillary Solomon. So we're, we're working jointly on this project, so either one of us.
Okay, does anybody else have any more questions? All right, well, thank you very much for joining us tonight and giving us this update on, on this, Hillary. I'm sure we'll hear more from you.
Okay, thank you for the time.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Okay, thanks.
Get back to my agenda. Um, so that's everything from the pre-approved, number six announcements. Kristin, do you have any announcements?
This is Kristin, I have no official announcements this evening.
Okay, so we will go to the port, reports, the zoning administrator's report?
This is Kristin again, no report submitted at this meeting.
Okay, and now we'll go to Planning Commission. Harry, do you have a report to share with us?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Okay.
Okay, um, yes, uh, on August 5th, we, um, we, uh, held a special meeting, uh, of the Planning Commission to discuss, uh, recommendations to the Select Board, uh, the sole purpose of being, uh, to, uh, make our recommendations for who should fill the two seats for the vacant seats on the Planning Commission. We invited the three candidates who were at the meeting, uh, to say a few words on their behalf, and commissioners were invited to ask. behalf, and commissioners were invited to ask questions of the candidates, and after some discussion between the commissioners, it was decided the commission would, would openly declare their preferences for who they would recommend to the select board to fill the seats recently, recently vacated by Eric Mack and Melissa McCown, without going into executive session. So I polled, excuse me, I polled the commissioners one at a time with the following selected for the recommendation to the select board, to fill Eric's seat, the majority recommended John Sabatka, and from Melissa McCown's seat, the majority recommended Jessica Vanort. So this is, now your decision, I think you have all the information you need about the candidates to make your decisions, so we leave it up to you. Frank Nelson introduced a proposal to expand the planning commission to nine seat, to a nine-seat body from a seven-seat body. We had some brief discussion about it, and I then shared the, polled the members of the commission and the majority, I think the majority was in favor of keeping the select board at a seven-member body, but we leave it up to your discussion as well, your discussion with the public. So that's all I have to report, and I'm going to leave it to you to make your selections, and I'd love to have a full board by our August 24th meeting.
Okay, so Harry's made our reports to us, and, and they've chosen two candidates to fill the two vacant spots. Does anybody have any questions or comments to Harry?
Uh, this is Ed, I just have a question regarding Frank. Has he been attending all your meetings, or?
Yeah, yes, he has.
So evidently he is very interested.
Yeah, he sure is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, may I say something?
Yes, please, Kristen.
Kristen, I just want to remind the board that at the last meeting, you made a motion that was approved to appoint John Sabatka to one of vacant positions. So this evening, there's one, one official existing position on the table, so just wanting to remind you all of that.
Right, because, okay, so John, John Sabatka is, it was appointed at the last meeting at, at the, right, and then because Melissa's...
Correct, Melissa had put, resigned the morning of our last meeting, so the board decided to wait a cycle and then revisit the additional open position this evening. So currently, there's, there's one official to fill, and then you've all been sent some information like Harry touched upon about the perspective of expanding the commission.
Okay, so right now... Excuse me, was that someone?
Yeah, this is Frank, could I say something?
Yes. Go ahead.
The preference was openly debated, and a poll was made as to who was preferring some, one member said they couldn't work with me, but I've never worked with that person before on anything, so I don't know where that came from. And when Harry said that there was a consensus on the move from seven to nine, there was no discussion or vote or poll on that topic at that meeting. I talked to, I sent an email out to the select board, Harry got a copy with the information from the Secretary of State General Counsel's office, allowing by law to go to nine, and right now, where you have seven members and an alternate, you actually have eight sitting at meetings with Wayne, and with the absence of two, with the two vacancies, that puts it down to five plus Wayne. So the three interested parties could easily be put on, and you'd be just extending the board, the commission by one more member, and putting maybe Wayne back on as a full-time member instead of an alternate, and you would dwell within the state statute allowing that. And I've emphasized in my email to the select board some interests that I had in regards to economic development, village overlays and the like, and there was a number, there was a point in time where Harry can remember this, he, we were going to go with a, after the, the Orton Foundation presentation, we were going to go with an economic development model, which Mike has said that we need jobs, according to some of my other discussions with the select board over, over the years, and so I was going with that, and but the two individuals on the planning commission who were to lead that, co-lead that effort aft, and I, I questioned them time and time again to hold an organizational meeting for a group of interested people who would be collected to do this, and there was no meeting ever held, no direction, no follow-up, nothing, it just fizzled out, and that was pretty much, I was regret about that because Mike had said, you know, we need to have jobs, and I felt that to be a priority, and that this Orton Foundation who gave a presentation to the select board in, in a larger room was certainly a, with a 20-person staff could have assisted with that, but there was no organizational meeting even to get that group invited in, and that's why I was interested in being on the commission, so I had a seat instead of being the general public to encourage the direction towards economic development and towards the village overlays to fix some of the problems where the villages just can't meet some of the criteria of the unified bylaws for the general town to make exceptions for those particular individual properties in some cases. And so I was hoping to be on the...
Please wrap it up.
To do that, and, and the select board could actually move to nine if you got that copy, I copied the Secretary of State General Counsel's email in regards to that section to you, and so that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Well, the first thing that we have is we have a, an open seat, and that's the first thing we have to address. So the planning commission has recommended that Jessica Vanort be appointed to, to finish out the term vacated by Melissa McCown. Is, does anybody on the board want to make a motion that we go with the planning commission's pick and, and choose Jessica, and appoint Jessica to finish the, the term, the seat vacated by Jess, uh, Melissa McCown? Okay, does anybody on the select board have a, a alternative option?
This is John, I'll make that motion for Jessica Vanort.
Okay. Do I hear a second on that, on that motion? I, I don't hear a second on that motion, John, so we'll have to, we'll have to stall that motion. Does anybody on the select board have a different idea that they want to do? So if no one's speaking up, then, Ed, go ahead.
I would make a motion to put Frank up for...
Okay, Ed made the motion to put Frank up. Do I hear a second on that motion?
I'll second that, this is Chuck.
Chuck will second that motion. Okay, so we have a motion made by Ed and seconded by Chuck to put Frank on the planning commission board. Is there any more discussion? All right. All in favor, Chuck?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
John?
No.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, please make it noted, Kristen, that I also vote no. But we had three yeses and two noes.
Okay. And so the result is approved?
The result is Frank has been appointed to fill the vacancy by Melissa McCown.
Like to thank Jessica for her interest, though, and hope she'll continue to maintain interest in the planning process in Pollitt.
And everything else, it...
Yeah, I'm certainly interested in serving the community in some way, so I'm sure something else will come up. I know that Harry had also mentioned possibly being an alternate at some point, and I would definitely be interested in that as well.
Thank you, Jessica.
This is Frank, can I speak again?
Go ahead.
This is Frank, can I speak again? Uh, we do have an open position for, there is an open position for the clerk for the planning commission, correct, Harry?
Yes.
Okay, and that one, that one's paid, too?
Well, I don't know what the requirements are for that, but I would be, I would be interested in hearing more about it at a future time.
Kristen, go ahead, please.
Jessica, this is Kristen, just so you know, the position description is listed on the Polit Vermont, it's polit.vermont.gov, the website under employment.
Very familiar with that website, yes, thank you, Kristen.
Great.
Okay, as far as the planning commission, do you have anything else, Harry?
No, nothing from me.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Harry? Okay, let's move right along. But, Board Foreman's report.
Hey, I guess I didn't send anything to Kristen today, and that didn't dawn on me till just now, but we have finished up in Rupert, we did eight tenths of a mile down there, we're back changing culverts and preparation on the Betsbridge Road, we probably by the end of this week, we'll be ready to put rock on that. That, along with some spot grading, just to touch up some storm damage here and there, and that's pretty much what we've been up to, so, just as quick as we get organized, we'll be headed for the Betsbridge Road to, to put rock on that, so.
Do we have to run a machine?
I, not at this... Not at this time, Mike, no, we're going to be able to get floated, so, we're running a bulldozer to put it down, but I think we're going to be able to get it right from Riley, and I'm actually kind of in a hurry because I want to, he's moving some while we're stagnant here, and it's stuff we could be using, so.
Okay.
It's, you know, some of that nice material like we've had, so.
Right, okay, excellent.
Which, that, that one will go fairly quick just because of the close proximity to the, to the site, you know, it'll, probably two trucks will cycle all day there and get everything done, so my hope is to get a little payback from Rupert, we'll do it when we start drawing our, running to Galusha, so that, that would be more beneficial, so.
Okay, where are you starting and finishing on Betsbridge Road?
Uh, we're starting just beyond the Betsbridge extension, coming in from Bob Jones's end, and we will come down the hill to below Edwards's driveway, and then blend in, because we have touched up that stretch down through around the corner by the old, Jim Kramer's old house when we did the grants on those two culverts there. So we'll pick up, and then we'll come around the corner and start again at the second driveway up into Lauren Axelrod's, and then we'll go from there back to Mel's driveway, that's, that's, that's the biggest problem area, is down through by Tim Waite's horse barn and this old sawmill there, that's where we've got, we've got a little ledge there, and I spoke with Lee and Corey about coming in with his hammer and, and knocking some rock off there, so he's going to take a look at it and see what he thinks it would cost, so you may be hearing about that in the not-too-distant future. Stuff that we didn't, couldn't pull out of there and didn't break up for us, so it just makes good sense to do it right now, and we'll incorporate the rock we generate right into the road, and we'll establish a better ditch line, so.
Okay.
We had, this is Chuck, has there been any more comments in regards to the survey stakes on that property that's a question?
Not that I'm aware of.
How about you, Bob?
No, I haven't heard anything on it.
Pat talk to you about him?
Uh, Pat mentioned to me, and, and I had him talk to Keith, because Keith was the one that maintained the road down through there, and that was the end of that conversation, I believe.
Okay. Keith, what did they find wrong with the backhoe the second time?
Uh, they found that the oil that was leaking into the compartment and pressurizing the brakes was coming through the parking brake, and so they rebuilt the parking brake seal. It appears to me that we have, they had to do the brake seals again because they pushed out, and he said they weren't leaking bad, but had to be replaced, so they basically redid what they originally did, plus the addition of rebuilding the parking brake, so.
Does the bill reflect any, anything, or is it just two?
Not enough, if you'd like me to pursue it farther, I, I think we are repaying for some material and some time there that they had already billed us for, so I think there's probably going to be some additional charge, but I think we could shave some off what they're proposing at this time, so. The way it's not broken down, it's not broken down in any manner that says they redid what they originally repaired and then went on, it's all in one itemized bill, so I, I think we could, well, I would talk with Craig over there, he's back now, so he's much better to deal with than, than the other guy was, and I think we can hash some things out, and just, he needs to be made aware that we're dissatisfied anyway, so.
Okay. Please keep me abreast of any dealings you have with him, and just give me some, a call after you talk to him, if you would, please.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, the other thing, go ahead.
Uh, do you want to talk about trucks?
Yep.
Um, now, as I said before, we, I think we're looking at a Ford and a Dodge. The International and the Chevy are the same truck, more or less the same truck, and I think they're too large for our application. They're really designed for an 11, 6, or 12-foot body, and I think that just stretches things out too far for maneuverability when we're using that truck, and, and that, they, both of those were the highest numbers we got on the quotes. And I didn't go re-quote everybody I'd originally talked to, I just kept in touch with the two most competitive ones, and those are the two prices that you have. The Ford guy was competitive right from the start, he had the best price originally, but the problem is he's selling those trucks, and I think we want to focus on a truck that is on a lot here somewhere as at this time, because it's, it's open-ended as to what you're going to do when you order one, because they aren't making 2021s yet, and they've ceased production of 2020s, and the, actually, the Ford told me they couldn't even price one till after the 22nd, 26th of August or something, he thought they would have prices out for a 2021 model year, but there's no, no guarantee on term of when you're going to see it, so if we wait till August to, to price one and go, you know, we could be looking October or November, we're looking next spring before we even get there, I think the two trucks you have are available on the lots, or they were unless they sold today, so, the difference is, you notice, the Ford is one that they set up, I guess, for Washington... the difference is, you notice, the Ford is one that they set up, I guess, for Washington County, and then they didn't take it. So it already has a dump body on it. It's a regular painted dump body. And, um, I kinda had my heart set on thinking we would go with a stainless steel body. If you think, we've, we spent $2,600 to sandblast and paint that body partway through the life expectancy of the truck. I think if you front-load that and put the stainless steel body on, you're getting away from it, you know? And you look at, like Rupert just did with their stainless steel body, they just bought a truck, too. They're swapping it onto the next truck. So, you know, there's some cost savings down the road, but it, it still, still makes sense, even though it's money up front. Um, I've been talking with Tarko on the sander, and I think we can save some additional money by converting our salt and pepper Tarko sander to electric, because hydraulic is not really an option on most of these new trucks. There's no room, there's no, the insurance companies are balking it, running the pressure lines into the cab and things like that. So the electric seems to be the trend of the future. And, um, most of the sanders I've looked at, um, actually, the Tarko sander electric is exactly what we have right now with electric motors to run it. So ours is convertible, and, you know, I think if we just took our stainless tub down there and did some axles and sprockets and a new bed chain and the new bottom pan in it, and convert it to electric, there'd be some cost savings there. Because that's a, oh, a $12,000 or $14,000 item to buy new. So I know you can buy the, like the Fisher plastic ones considerably less money, but they're, they're not of the duty cycle that I would prefer. You know, ours has a bigger bed chain, wider throat, transfers material, and it works very, very well. I would hate to, hate to go backwards in that department. So, um, as far as the two prices you have, I guess I could be happy with either one of them. I don't really have my heart set on either one of them trucks. It's, uh, I think they both would give us a good service life, so I'm open for discussion.
What about snowplow?
Well, the snowplow, I think we would end up with one of the Fisher V plows on it. Um, the one with the tapered barrel, so that it casts the snow away like our current plow does. A regular one-way Fisher plow just puts the snow just barely outside of the duals on that truck, and, and it doesn't push it away. And you're just, limit yourself considerably by doing that. Where the one that actually casts it and throws it away from the truck, we would, uh, and, you know, I don't have a dollar figure on that. It makes a difference which truck you buy. It's, you know, you can figure what you're gonna spend there, I know. But it's, uh, I've talked with that Woody over there. He's the only one I've talked to about equipment so far. And, um, you know, that's probably as good an option as any. And when we get a truck bought, and we know where, what we have, then I can pursue that further.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Okay, so you're gonna go with just two prices when you have four prices?
Well, I had-
We haven't heard the other two prices. You never brought them before the board.
Yeah, I did. I sent them, but I sent them on the-
I took it upon myself to speak with Jeff Delury and Eric Ross. They re-quoted those trucks. Also saw a red Ford in Comstock's yard this afternoon, a 550. Um, so I guess I'm a little concerned. But, uh-
All four quotes, all four quotes-
You guys, you guys do what you want.
Email today. All four quotes were in our email today, Chuck. The two that you got, and the one from Ed, and the one from Keith. Ed had a Ford quoted. You, you put a International and a, and a Chevrolet, and, and Keith ended up, and put a Dodge one in. And both the Chevrolet and, and the International were about $10,000 more, right, Keith?
Uh, I think the International was 54 and change, and the, and the Chevrolet was 55 and change when I started. And the Ford and the Dodge have been under 50 right from the start. Actually, the Dodge guy sold the truck he originally quoted us, and then took a nicer truck and shaved it down to, so that it fit the program there, so.
Okay, I want to correct you on your price on Delury's. This is Chuck. The Delury price was $52,943, and that is for the red to match the two max. If you go with a different color than the red, there's a $395 deduction. Also included in that International price is fender flares and running boards. If you don't want the flares, you can take $500 more off. And actually, Eric's price was similar.
This is Ed. I thought, Keith, you said those were too big for what you wanted?
I think they are, Ed, yes.
Yeah. I think we should make a decision tonight, personally. The way vehicles are selling, and anyhow, I, I think we should get it done. I mean, we're in, now, we're in the middle of August. I think-
So we got probably another $10,000 or $12,000 in the outfit then, too, huh, Keith? Well, no, that would be just for a plow and the change of sander over.
Yeah.
Uh, there's no, there's no dump box in that quote, was there, Keith?
The only one we quoted with a dump box on it is the Ford, and that is the only truck he has at this time that fits our program, so.
That's a $10,000 dump box, right?
That's what he's got it priced at, and that's with a, I don't know what it started at, but that's, yeah, that's what he's got, $99.95 or something in the, in his quote.
Steel dump box, not stainless.
Not stainless.
Yeah, that's the thing. It's not stainless. Um, and I kinda like Keith's idea of what he was saying about the Dodge, and then fit it out, you know, the way we want it, and go stainless. And I know it's more outlay to begin with, but it should save us some money in the long run.
Well, you see these other towns swapping it onto the next truck. Holtney's done it, Rupert's done it, Bennington's done it, you know, they're, they, they don't keep a truck as long as we tend to, but they run one six years, seven years or something, and they don't, most of those don't keep them after they're off warranty.
That, oh, that was gonna be my question. Is there any, what's the warranty or extended warranty on these trucks?
It's, it's on the prices there, but most of them are three-year, 36. Then you've got driveline that's extended, and you can purchase whatever you want for additional cost, so.
This is Ed again. I wouldn't be against purchasing the extended warranty, but at some point.
I would, I would think it makes sense. Um, you know, I'm thinking we, the only thing we ever bought it on that I'm aware of is the grader, and it ended a year and a half before we had a major problem. But our backhoe right now, if we had got an extended warranty on it, probably would have, uh, would be paying for itself right now, so. And we tend to, we may not use them as much, and, uh, as a contractor might. We don't, we get age, but not hours, if you know what I mean. We don't run the number of hours that some people do. So it's, it's hard to, hard to figure, you know, what to put on it. I think we figured, we were way under on our hours on the grader anyway, but we were out on our term, and so I think we tried to figure-
What did Rupert get for a new truck?
They bought a Dodge. But I think that's all they priced, Mike. I, I think they priced Dodges. I think they had one, and they're happy with it, and that's what they stuck with, so.
Yeah, because they had a Ford, and they traded after a couple of years.
Right.
The V8 design by, the V8 engine by design doesn't develop the torque at the low end that we really require to do the job that we want to do, so it doesn't make the best choice for the engine.
Well, there's certain things in both of these trucks. They're, you know, I wasn't too fussy about most of it, but there's certain things that I wanted. And I wanted the largest rear end they would put in there, which is a 488. And we're changing directions back and forth under heavy load, and I think that's pretty critical. And, uh, both of those trucks that you have there are, have that in it. And that's one reason those are a couple of the trucks that you got there. It's not listed on the Dodge, but it's included in that max tow package that's listed there, so. And then in the Ford, it's listed separately. But that's something I really think we want to pay attention to. I don't think we want to get down into a 430 gear ratio.
I agree.
We're not looking for speed. We're not looking for mileage. We're not gonna get any mileage, or we can't go fast anyway doing what we do with it. So we want it to be durable and strong, and that's, so that's one of the things I made sure I focused on. And the other interior situation there, most of them are priced with the base interior in them. Um, and then the Dodge, like I said, he sold the one he originally priced us, so he cut the price on this one to be competitive. And he's got cloth seats, has running boards, and has, you know, has a chrome package on it that the other ones don't. It's, it's a little nicer truck that he sharpened his pencil to promote to us, so. Um, I, my opinion, that's the best value right there, and it fits the program. And I don't know what your guys' thoughts are, but I'm not a brand favorite. I mean, I just, I just think that one works. That's a good engine driveline, and, you know, some of the rest of the truck may be what I disappoints me, but as far as that, I think that one's pretty hard to beat.
Okay.
Now, I'm assuming we're just going to, whichever truck we buy, we're going to pay out of the equipment fund for, no financing?
I would expect that that makes the most sense. I don't know, unless there's some ridiculous-
Well, I think it does, because we're, we're, we're at a point where I think we can do that and not cut ourselves short for future purchases. There's, uh, $134,559 in your equipment fund right now, and, you know, this is not going to take the majority of that. That's gonna leave us a nest egg in there, and we'll have, uh, $25,000 added back in after tax collection in September. So it leaves us fairly good shape. Even though we don't have a whole total on the truck, we have a, we have a idea of how much it's gonna be, starting with a plus or minus $50,000 truck, so.
They're gonna be about 80, I would suspect.
I would suspect, Mike, but there's a lot of them coming in at 100, and I'm sure we're gonna be well under that, so.
Yeah.
I mean, we have-
I, I guess I would say the 80 would be the, is, is low as I would expect it to possibly be.
Right. I mean, we've got a stroke system to go in, a dump body, electrical system, and, uh, and the snowplow, so.
Yeah, we're gonna be more than that. Okay. So I guess, does anybody else have any questions or comments for Keith?
Are we gonna have a pressure washer available for this truck after we buy it?
We have one.
Yeah, right.
Right, we do.
Our Mack engines really short.
Well, I think you ought to show up once in a while, and you'll see Perry Brown or Dale out there washing their trucks. They're used every day, Chuck, and they get dirty.
Does somebody on the board want to make a motion to, uh, to purchase one of these trucks?
This is Ed. I'd like to just clarify. Keith, you, you're the one doing the driving, and you're the one using it. Do you prefer the Dodge? Which do you prefer?
I, what do I prefer? I, I think right now, I think the Dodge is the one to buy under current circumstances. If I found a Ford that had everything I wanted on it, you know, the big rear end and all set up with the heavy electrical system and everything else, I would give it consideration, but I think they're hard to come by.
With, with that being said, if there's a motion needed to purchase the Dodge, I would make that motion, uh, I will make that motion.
Okay, Ed. Ed made a motion to buy the Dodge that Keith has the price on. Does somebody want to second that motion? Nobody? What are we gonna do? Are we gonna buy a truck, or is all this work for waste?
I'll second that. I'll second that motion.
Okay, John. John Malcolm seconded it. Is there any more discussion about buying, about the motion made to buy this Dodge truck? All in favor, Chuck?
No.
Ed?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Motion approved. Does anybody else have anything for Keith? Okay. Assessors report. Do we have the errors and omissions?
So this is Kristen. You were all sent the errors and omissions following the last meeting, so we just need a motion if you are wishing to authorize the signing and approval of it.
And apparently that had to do with the transfer of the Hosley firm. John, did you look that? Is that, am I recalling that correctly?
I don't know. I'm not aware of that.
Um, did, did you see a copy of the errors and omissions?
I did not.
So I emailed it to you all on, like, Wednesday, the 12th, the day after the meeting, remember, because Karen didn't have it. Um, so it's probably far off in your email inbox.
Could you, could you bring that up and read it for us?
It was name-changing.
It was mostly, right?
Um, hold on. Sorry, I said I sent it to you on August 12th, but that would mean I sent it to you tomorrow, and that's not possible. Um, so, errors and omissions, we are requesting approval for 2020 grand list changes as shown. Um, parcel, what would you like me, for me to read? There was, yeah, it's name changes, so. uh parcel number 0153 dash 2393 name was Louis Edward and Marie et al and name is Gregory Gross and then
those were
another parcel from Edward and Marie Lewis also going to Gregory Gross
right and that's the only that's the only thing it didn't amount to any kind of non monetary changes or anything like that it was just a name
yeah the amount on the grand list for the first parcel at 16860 and it is that now as well and it was the second parcel um which is 0022 hyphen 0100 the grand list was 3490 and the grand list now is also 3490 30,490
thank you very much
was transferred to gross on 12 11 2019 as an addendum to the parcel transfer however the clerk's office and assessor's office did not receive that addendum therefore the transfer was not recorded in the clerk's office and was not included in the 2020 grand list in the assessor's office
okay somebody want to make a motion that we accept the errors and emissions
I'll make that motion
okay thank you John
I will
second Ed was seconded all in favor Chuck
yeah
Ed
yes
John
yes
Bob
yes
okay thank you
and uh Bob this is Kristen will you make sure to sign that tomorrow on your on your journey of signing
yes I will thank you
okay who's next Kristen
this is Kristen next up is the town yeah the town clerk's memo I was not submitted a formal town clerk memo for tonight's meeting I know that today was primaries so I'm assuming Deb and co were incredibly busy um but I did want to mention so there was that email that was sent out regarding the new property claim from passive and the VLCT do you and Deb followed up with that wondering if anybody knew what that was about um so at the last meeting I know Julie had submitted the claim for the damage due to the sewer leak um but also Mike you had made mention that maybe you had seen that we were covered from that so
I looked I looked in a little deeper and found that I was mistaken I didn't read it correctly
okay
so
that is
I think it's just a claim that that's in process and I don't know if it's the right avenue yet until it gets denied
I know that Julie um submitted that claim and was surprised to hear that it had been approved so quickly um so I will touch base with her and with Deb and see what we can do to figure out what they need on the state level to get that figured out
excellent thank you
um so next up
treasurers report
yes there's the town treasurers memo um Julie um was working the polls today so she was not able to attend so the town treasurers memo there are two warrants to be signed payroll for the week was 9,560 37 the total accounts payable was 33,221 34 monies from the general fund was 13,665 67 highway 20,469 67 wastewater 8,646 37 property tax bills are all sent out and some are already being paid wastewater bills were sent out this Monday I've been working the polls today and will not be at tonight's meeting have a good evening respectfully submitted Julie Mack
okay anybody uh want to make a motion on the warrant
make a motion to accept the warrants
okay do I have a second
I'll second that it's Ed
Ed was seconded all in favor Chuck
yes
Ed
yes
John
yes
Bob
yes
okay warrants are approved
I have a comment on the the uh payables
okay
Jeff Kelly did fix the library roof uh I haven't seen it yet but I did call Mary Lou and it survived last night's shower so I guess we did okay um but it came in at what he had proposed um at or a five dollars last 325 he had said 330 so that's done and I also uh want to at this appropriate time to comment about the Peter Welch Zoom meeting Mike
sure
okay uh Mike offered for me to represent the town in a Zoom meeting with Peter Welch about money from the feds for localities um state budgets uh and uh I attended I did not speak they had about 12 people speak from a variety of towns for about a a little under an hour just to listening session to see how covid related expenses were happening to uh to towns and uh it's it sounded to me like the towns that were worst hit have been the towns that have uh local option taxes um that mainly are tourist related whether it's stow or whatever they seem to be the ones that have gotten hit the worst Burlington's revenue is down 13% the mayor said um so there's having to be some scrambling to and local needs and they were trying to present that to Peter Welch in the discussions in Congress which you may be aware of um getting money back to the states Polit uh seemed to be the main concern is there's been a lot of extra time put in by the clerk's office for uh getting out the absentee ballots um and uh but I think they designed the process okay and uh but it has taken a lot more of the assistant clerks uh time um also the assistant clerk has been having to help with researchers doing land record researchers which has been quite active but it takes uh under covid uh situation it takes uh more uh aiding the researchers with their search um than it used to so that's my short report on that
okay well thank you for sharing that with us and attending the meeting does anybody have any questions for John regarding that I guess we'll move on
John this is Frank
go ahead Frank
was there talk of any reimbursement for Zoom meetings and electronic meeting adjustments as well as the potential for upgrading uh meeting rooms to continue with an option of both live and uh Zoom simultaneous meetings after this goes forward any money for that
that that wasn't discussed or brought up as anybody priority uh any of the towns sent out uh you know has just sent out their tax bills to us and uh it's hard to know as we are you know how to expect the revenue will come in um but that was not brought up at that meeting by the 12 or so that testified but I know it is an issue with our town and other towns uh a point well taken and uh
okay thank you emergency management oh delinquent tax did we have any report from delinquent tax collector or not
good reminder um let's see hold on so um this is Kristen and Kim Ayers our delinquent tax collector sent an email actually before our last meeting which my apologies I forgot to bring up um but so her message stated that she is going through her list for tax sale and it looks like there are a few properties that should go they are balances that were before covid and are the same people that are always on my list I have reached out to them to work with them as far as payments and some have made them and the others have not I spoke to Kevin O'Toole and we are able to start tax sale as there is nothing legally stopping us due to covid so I wanted to see what the board thought please let me know thanks Kim Ayers delinquent tax collector
what's our opinion on that
I would say this is Chuck I would say that she needs to proceed forward
okay anybody wants to second that motion
this is Ed I would second that motion
okay all in favor Chuck
yes
Ed
yes
John
yes
Bob
yes
okay approved emergency management excuse me when you're ready Kristen
thank you just one sec all right would you like would the board like for me to write back to Kim and relay the motion to her
please
I feel like I've got like 18 lists going right now sorry sharing with me everybody
doing great
okay so we have the emergency management directors report
yes
July 2020 this is Kristen on behalf of Bob Morleano covid 19 updates continued to be posted daily to the Facebook page to keep residents informed participated in three conference calls sorry Frank I'm just going to mute you because I'm getting some feedback okay um participated in three conference calls this month with Vermont emergency management and other emergency entities and attended EMD roundtable and transportation meeting on 7/22
okay and do you have anything for the health officer
yes so the health officer's report from Bob Morleano um received a call from Rutland Regional Medical Center regarding a potential rabies exposure no report was needed made an inspection based on a complaint of trash including discarded food waste on a property trash was found but no food waste consequently there is no health hazard investigated a complaint regarding excessive noise trash open fires and unruly dog none of the complaints are enforceable by the health officer continue to monitor planned demolition of multifamily dwelling on Route 149 landlord is now complying with asbestos regulation Vermont emergency management is offering free masks to municipalities VEM will send an amount up to 25% of the population Polit has requested it its allotment and we are working on a plan on how to distribute Bob Morleno
excellent thank you wastewater I guess we're up to next right okay after everybody's had a little bit of time to digest our last week meeting uh the presentation at the last meeting I'd like to know what what your feelings are on on moving forward with this project to get to get into the study done and to see exactly how much funding we can get available and how it would affect their tax rate etc I think they said it would be about three more thousand dollars out of pocket to get to get to the stage where we can we can see if we can get the funding and then it'll depend on the on the levels of everything and how how much funding reimbursement is is indeed available and even if we get that far we don't have to do the project after we get the funding if if it doesn't look like it's a feasible project
Mike this is Bob I don't know if you're looking for a motion or just a uh opinion but I'm I think we need to move forward with it
sounds like a motion to me does anybody want to second that motion
this is Ed I will second that motion I mean what it's what's a system 40 years old
well this upgrade is only like six or eight but
oh yeah yeah but no it needs to be
right yes it is 40 years old it was in I think it came online in 1983 and it ran one lifetime well and now we gotta bring it back to that
yeah yeah
so Kristen you had a question
what exactly is the motion
as you it will be to proceed with to uh go for funding for the uh for the uh sludge storage feasibility study to proceed to the next level for the feasibility study to apply for the funding we have to get a engineer qualification sheet and then we can go to town brown and I'll work with Jenny and and Jill to see what our next step is
okay so the net the motion is to proceed to the next level for application of funding for the sludge storage feasibility
yes
thank you
well said
okay all in favor Chuck all in favor Chuck
yeah go ahead
Ed
yes
John
yes
Bob
yes
okay pass thank you I'll I'll work with the with our operator our engineer tomorrow and and uh get get the ball rolling
this is Frank could I say something
yes go ahead Frank
uh the tax bills just came out the sewer bills would be launched in a few months I believe and maybe by then yeah the uh we could have a you could you you would have a kind of a rough sketch of what needs to be done and that and put that into a one-page letter uh and send it out with the bills so that um people would be aware of or kept aware of the of what is going on
well we'll see how far we get on this preliminary engineering study when it when it comes time to uh to vote to approve it we'll have to do a bond vote anyway so that will be that's when all the information will get disseminated out to everyone involved okay and now we're on to old finish old business
yes um this is Kristen so the one item that we had on older unfinished business was the continuation of available town positions um that discussion so I went online and I looked at the available positions that the town currently has posted and those include a permanent zoning administrator um apparent maybe an assistant for that position I did remind Jonas and he did say that it's still something on his radar and he will get me a description at some point um the clerk of the planning commission as well as the town health officer um and which Bob is still in but is searching for the right replacement for him um and then also the web coordinator position which is not currently posted so my suggestion to the board upon looking at all of that is that we proceed with posting I feel like all of those positions are quite different um in what their responsibilities would be at this point in time with the way that the town is structured so I think my recommendation for what it's worth is that the town proceed with putting with posting the availability of the web coordinator position Elizabeth did inquire with me today about what the status of that was um and then we can go from there and if we had I think it's the right thing to do to post it so that anybody who's interested in qualified can apply should somebody who's internal with the town apply for it we could then revisit looking at what it would be to just morph two positions um but my recommendation would be that we move forward with posting the position on our town website and if the board is interested we could even go so far as indeed dot com which the town has used before the town has used before. But I think that starting with the website as well as our e-blast Facebook pages, emails, et cetera, would be a great way to start because I think there might be internal interest at this point.
That seems like a very good starting place to me. How does everybody else, everybody good with that?
Yes, just am. Yes, I am.
Yeah.
Yes.
Looks like, looks like a good direction to go, Kristin. So if you don't mind continuing in that direction, it would be great.
Okay, so I will, I, this is Kristin again. I will send you guys all a more formal job description for Elizabeth's, our web coordinator role and then hopefully even prior to next meeting, we can go ahead and get that posted. Do you have any, any desired date of which we have applications back by? Maybe two, two meetings from now?
Yeah, give them a month. I think that makes sense. We need to, we shouldn't leave it open-ended.
Okay. I will keep going with that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
That's all that I had on the agenda for older unfinished business. Not sure if anybody else had anything.
Is there any new business?
Yes, new business involves the speed concerns through West Pollitt.
Okay.
So there were, and thank you to, I think Diana and co, you've been waiting for that. Thank you. And Jennifer Sullivan, I see that you're here as well. I'm not sure if that's what you're here for or something different, but the board received several emails between the last meeting and this meeting regarding speed concerns in West Pollitt. Did everybody have a chance to review those?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sure, Mike, if you would like to open the floor to perhaps Diana.
Okay. Diana, you want to go first and then Jennifer, we'll get to you next?
Hi, I, I was really alarmed when I found mail across the street from an elderly widow and her mailbox had been hit. And when I brought it back to her, she said that it wasn't the first time. And just walking up and down 153 here, I've noticed big trucks speeding through. And then when they approach the hill, they kind of go over the middle line sometimes because there's trees growing down. It's a very narrow spot. If you're going south from the firehouse, when you go up the hill, you're, you're kind of in a blind spot there from cars coming the other way. And there's walls on both sides. There's a sidewalk, a very small sidewalk on the right and the trees are overgrown. So if any biker or pedestrian is there, you've got nowhere to go. So it's just very concerning because there's multiple families with children on the street right there. So I, I just, you know, I see wildlife in the street there all the time that's gotten squashed and I see cars competing, you know, coming down the hill with, you know, going up the hill, they're over and just, it's, it's an accident waiting to happen.
Okay, I appreciate your input and concern for this, so we'll have to, have you contacted the constable at all in regard to any of this or?
I haven't contacted the constable since it was a state road. I have reached out to my state representatives hoping that we could get maybe some funding to get one of those temporary speed lines so that people could see how fast they were going as they came through town. I think that might wake up a few people because I think a lot of times it's the same people that are just coming through here on their way to Granville or wherever it is they're going and they know the road and they, they think that, you know, they, they just kind of, we're just in the way to them. But it's an unpredictable situation with who's going to be in the road. And I just think that people need a heads up on, on what the speed limit is and how fast they are going. I bet that there's quite a few of them that are doing 45 miles an hour or greater even. And the speed limit down by the rail trail is 25 miles an hour. At the firehouse, it's 30 miles an hour. That's the other issue is you have an active firehouse with first responders, many of whom are volunteers and, you know, their lives are on the line really, as well as those who they serve when you have people tearing past the firehouse.
Okay, these are all very good concerns that we'll have to try and address. Kristin, do you, do you have an email for Dave Ricard that you can share those letters with, since he's right in town, he may be able to keep a little bit of focus on that?
Yeah, certainly. This is Kristin. I did, he was here at the beginning. I did invite him knowing that this was going to come up tonight. But I will certainly forward those emails to him. I wonder if there's any opportunity to reach out to Devin Neary while these speed studies are happening in Pollitt. Wondering if there's any opportunity perhaps that that can be expanded out to West Pollitt while they're focusing on our area?
I think it would be great, especially since we have the rail trail here and so we already have a lot of biking and pedestrians going on. And a lot of the local people that go down to that rail trail walk along that very stretch of road where that stretch of road is very dangerous. You know, coming into town from the direction of Rupert, coming down that little hill, it's really, you know, you go around a curve and then down a hill and it's a blind spot there. And, you know, every house that's along there with kids and, and other people interested in using the rail trail, a lot of them go down towards the post office and enter the rail trail down there where the parking lots are, but they walk or they bike. And so there's a lot of traffic out here on this road.
I'd like to add, my, my name is John. I'd like to add a couple things. Just the signage at that intersection where the monument is. Coming into it from the south is a yield sign that has a lot of words on it. It says, "Yield left to oncoming traffic." It should just be a yield sign, really. Egg Street, coming in out of New York to that intersection, there is no sign. There's nothing there. And then coming in from 22 past Mr. Roy Egg's shop, the speed limit's 25. Where everywhere else it's 30 and there's no sign or anything going that way until you get to the post office, there is a yield sign. So that, that road crosses in front of Egg and then comes to a yield. So I mean, that makes sense, but you know, maybe there should be a stop sign at Egg Street or at somewhere.
Yeah, because people coming up Egg Street, they've got no signs telling them what to do and you've got the rail trail traffic right there and parking lots. And the rail trail's getting a lot more use now that it's been improved. We've seen a lot of traffic on it and cars park there every day.
And the pandemic's bringing a lot of, a lot of bicycle traffic to the area.
Yeah.
People are riding their bikes. They, they come off the rail trail there and they start going through town looking for a place to buy a drink.
Yes.
They'll go all the way up the street to the factory, up that blind hill.
Yeah.
I've watched them do it.
Yeah, yeah.
And they'll come back to their families and say, nope, nothing here.
We hope to change that someday, you know?
This is Ed. So, this is Ed.
Hi.
Hi there. I just have a question regarding, would it help if there was brush cut along that road?
Yes.
Well, I mean, sidewalk maintenance would be a big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mike, that's something that our.
Right, that's, I'm, I'm making notes as we're going along and I'd like to ask Keith to evaluate all the brush hanging into the road down through there.
Okay, yeah, good, thank you.
If we can try and come up with a comprehensive plan to deal with that.
Okay, this, this is Chuck.
This is Frank.
You remember, you remember, Michael, there's two vacant houses there that are major contributors to that brush.
Well, it's actually.
If someone was living in those houses, it would be up to them to take care of that issue.
Because there's, it's actually overhanging trees that are right on the hill. Like if you just take a drive through here, you'll see what I'm talking about. And I think also that the truck that I saw the other day going across the midline on its way up with a car coming down where there was a little bit of a scary moment watching it to see if there was going to be a collision. I think the truck went over the center line because it was trying to avoid the trees, the overhanging trees. And there is a homeowner in that house and, and I don't know if they just don't have the means to, to trim the trees or what the deal is there.
Because if they're in the road, there are responsibility at that point anyways. Is that, isn't that correct, Keith? Keith must not be listening.
Yes, it is. I believe he's talking about spruce trees that have been an ongoing issue on Rosenthal's. And then the mailbox that hangs out right there is also an obstacle that people swerve to go around. And you know, that, that doesn't really belong that close into the right of way because it encroaches into the traveled portion.
Well, that, one of the mailboxes is belonging to a 94-year-old woman and I don't think there's much she can do about it herself. I mean, we need to have.
I'm aware of that. The only reason it's still there.
Right. Will you look, will you make it a point to go to and evaluate that, the trees in, in the near future before the next meeting? And Jennifer has something she'd like to add? Go ahead, Jennifer.
Can you hear me?
Just barely.
I'm new to Zoom, so I live on 153, right around the corner from, or right up the street from that little intersection there. And there is people, there's no speed, they, they completely ignore the speed limit. There's one guy who likes to do wheelies on his motorcycle up the hill. Tractor trailer is going up to there. There's people that try to walk on that road. I walk down to the post office and you're basically taking your life in your hands because there's just no room. People drive too fast. They don't have time to see you. So I would be all in favor of any kind of evaluation that you can do.
Okay, I think that, that we certainly have the leverage to, to get the ball rolling again on this. What was it about six years ago, Keith, that the state evaluated the monument and, and had a couple of options?
Yeah, that's been an ongoing discussion for many years. And it's, you know, it's, the signage he's speaking of is way outdated and yet there's not even anything modern that can be put there that resolves any issue whatsoever. The reason there's no signage coming up Egg Street is because they, you know, when they come up through there with the big trucks, they don't want to have to be forced to stop on that hill and then take off. So it's more of a yield and they can roll through it if nobody is coming from, help pass the wastewater plant, which is, there's a good sightline visibility there and it is 25 mile an hour speed limit, although I don't, I know they don't drive that. But a lot of the traffic studies and the information is going to be based on that fact that it is 25 mile an hour speed limit. And by doing that, in a lot of cases, we assume too much because we assume that's what they drive and, you know, that's, the speed factor is widespread. It's not exclusive to that area. It's, it's not even exclusive to the blacktop. They drive too fast on the secondary roads and regardless of what sign you put up there that gives a speed limit, it's the actual driving habits of people that creates the problem. And I'm not quite sure how we can do that. We can cut some brush. We can open up some sightlines and, you know, do a few things over there to help, but we're, had the discussion earlier about the discussion on the 133 Route 30 intersection on the Pollitt side, maybe we could move to that intersection when we got done there. But it would be a separate request for a separate traffic study and, you know, some input from the, from the state engineers on what to do, even though they are aware of it because it, it is state Route 153, but it is really a class two town of Pollitt Highway.
Okay, thank you for that, Keith.
This, this is Ed again.
This is Frank. Could I mention something?
This speeding.
Just one second, Frank.
This speeding problem is widespread all over town. I think we're going to have to start getting someone that's going to give out some tickets.
Okay.
It's just that simple.
Right.
I would like. One more comment. It's been a long time, or yeah, quite a while since I've worked for the postal service, but you should ask or you, someone should recommend to the 94-year-old lady that perhaps she could go to the post office and request a dismail, which would mean that her mail would be taken right to the door. I don't know if they do that anymore or not. I know we used to. There was a form you'd fill out, but anyhow, and that might solve the mailbox issue.
Okay, that's good. That's good to know. Okay, go ahead, Frank.
Yeah, being a resident of West Pollitt as well, I will concur with Jennifer and Diana and John. And having been there for many years, I'll say that the speed of the traffic, it seems this particular year since winter time is, is more of a problem than I remember in the past. And Keith's talking about the redesign of the intersection. The, that might be something to push forward at this time because the parking capacity for the bikers is also maxing out depending on the weekend. And it might be that redesign of that intersection would provide more parking for the rail trail and, and some other people might have some other ideas and kill more than one bird with one stone.
Okay, these are all very good points made. Kristin, do you think you'll be able to put a, a small email together and, and send it to Devin and see if we can get the ball rolling over on this side of town too? We might as well at least get it, get it in line on, on deck, so to speak. I mean, we really, it'd be hard to handle both jobs at once, but if we, if we had the ball rolling so that we could, we could move from one to the next, I think it would be a benefit for us.
Yes, I will, this is Kristin. I will email Devin and Sarah and ask if there's a way that we can get this project, because he did say that we'll start general and then kind of hone in our focuses. So I think that it's good to highlight all, or most of the, the two main problem areas. And then I will also email Dave Ricard and let him know that there have been these concerns. And would it be appropriate to ask him about how we can start maybe enforcing speed in that area?
I think that would be a good idea. It'd be nice to have his presence out there.
Yeah, well, I will send him that message as well and see where we can get in regards to having someone sitting around there a little bit more frequently.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. The, Jennifer, Diane, do you, do you guys have anything else that you would like to add tonight or?
No, just thank you for giving, giving us the opportunity to speak and these are all great ideas and it's, it's, it's really, makes us feel good that, that you guys are taking it seriously.
Great, thank you. Jennifer?
Yeah, I would second that and I think enforcement is a really good way to go. I've lived here a year now and I've seen a trooper go by once.
Not surprised. Okay, so yes, I think we can see if we can have our town constable be more visual and, and go from there and see what, see what, how we can get this problem corrected. Keith?
Yes?
Did you have something to say? I saw your light came on.
No.
Oh, I could add one more thing. Anybody that drives on Route 4 through the state of Vermont, you go through Bridgewater, there's a local constable there that sits in his car almost every single day. And everybody in the state of Vermont knows that he's there. And so everybody, when they drive into Bridgewater, they drive exactly the speed limit. And he's pulling over people that are going too fast. And, and you always see him, you know, have somebody pulled over and it's like, huh, they didn't know. They're not from around here. It would be nice to have, to have somebody local who's, you know, looking out for everybody's safety on a regular basis, you know?
This, this is Ed again. I believe it is a sheriff that they have in, over there. And I don't care. I go through there. don't care, I go through there often on, and I don't care what state the vehicle ahead of me is from. They all know to hit it, hit the brakes when they get to the, to Bridgewater.
Yeah.
They can be from Alaska, and they instantly hit the brakes. But, so I mean, it's, yeah, they don't mess around over there.
Not one bit.
Okay. Well, thank you all for joining the meeting, and, and you can check our web, uh, the minutes from the minute, or join the meeting again to, uh, see how we're making out on this project. Does anybody else have anything for public comment?
Well, I don't know about public comment or new business, but, uh, with the library opening back up in Pollet, um, I'm a little concerned with the parking that I'm, I believe that's people from Jano's house. There's a construction trailer that's parked in the library parking. There's at least one vehicle. Um, I just-
Okay, that's a valid point. So we'll have to monitor that situation, and I'm sure that if, if it has to do with Jana, she'll make sure that the-
It's been going on all winter. Um, and there's a construction trailer parked there twenty-four-seven.
Okay.
Um, and it's, and now with the drive-through, or now with the right-of-way being kept open, that has pretty much taken up at least two spaces there. So spaces are at a premium.
Okay. So we'll, we'll have to reach out to her.
This is Frank.
Go ahead, Frank.
I don't really have any other comment other than whatever this, we were, what I already mentioned throughout the meeting. However, there wasn't somebody that entered the meeting that, that Kristen may not have an attendance. It came in as iPhone, and I don't know if they wanted to disclose for attendance purposes.
I don't know, have they?
I can't understand what he's saying.
This is, this is Kristen. There have been two new attendees that have joined the meeting. One under the, um, the name is just iPhone, and another phone has eight oh two seven eight three eight nine five one. And Frank is just wondering if either would like to identify themselves for the minutes. However, unless you plan to speak and participate in the meeting, it is not a requirement.
Okay, I guess not then. So is there anything else for the new biz, uh, public comment? Okay, then I guess if, looking for a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. This is Ed.
All right, Ed, yeah, I have a second on that motion?
I really want to stay a little longer.
Okay, I'll take that as a yes, Chuck. Thank you. Alan in favor, Chuck?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ja, Bob?
Yes.
All right, thank you all for coming. Have a great evening.